Call it over to this regularly scheduled meeting of the day of the Keddelville Board of Commissioners. I'm awake. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those watching at home, since we do not have a big crowd here, you see some masks up front. That is something we hope we wouldn't have to get back to doing, but as we take a moment of silence, please keep all of our fellow neighbors and folks around the world in your thoughts as we're going through some challenging times right now. So let's take a moment. Thank you. Thank you. Our fellow board member, Mr. McAvoy. I wish we messed that one up. McAvoy. I really am late. As a personal instance, we'll not be able to make the meeting tonight. Board members, we have an agenda before you.
Yes. Should we make an amendment to the agenda to add the second presentation? Then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor.
Second.
I want to hear a second from this ingroom. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then you put his name. Motion carries. We have an agenda for folks in the audience and folks listening in. This is the point in our meeting when we have public comments, so if anybody'd like to come up and speak about any topic, this is your moment to do so. Three minutes for individuals and five minutes for groups. Please let us know your name and where you live.
Go ahead and step up to the microphone, sir. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Jay Lyle Bagley, 303 West Durham Street. And I did speak at the SISPC meeting, and I sent you guys and gals some information. I put my name on the list to speak only if there were questions with regard to the charts, graphs, and so forth. They look, they've got a green background. Has anyone actually seen them?
Yes.
Oh, you have seen them?
Yes, I reprinted them out for the fair and upright.
Oh, great. Are there any questions with regard to that and the implications?
Generally, a public comment is not really kind of a back and forth, so we try to stick to those protocols, but we appreciate you coming to add to what you submitted.
Okay. What I submitted included a speech that I had prepared. Yes. And I assume you've read that. The one thing I wanted to add with regard to what I had said last meeting and to clarify something with what I put in the paper that I sent. With regard to the West Durham Street drainage, back in '72, when our family built the house that we're in now, and we had a row of houses that the Bagleys had for family members, we had far less flooding. And one reason for that was there was a huge ditch behind all the properties that conveyed water more efficiently, I think, than the ditches in the front. In fact, my dad, Jim Bagley, and my uncle Buddy Bagley, and a couple of other uncles, used to help maintain that ditch. With all the building that's going on, the ditch has disappeared, and that's another reason that we're having more severe and more frequent floods. So that kind of points to our proposal that we try to get approval for the expansion to Durham Street. And I hope you all will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in public comments tonight? Let's try to get people out of with time to get up there. If seeing no one else interested, we will close public comment. This time, there's response to public comment. I'll let you know that we do have a great town engineer and a great staff that studies drainage throughout the town in great length, and they will definitely be taking your comments into consideration as we look at the townwide priorities for capital improvements, which heavily leans towards working on drainage, as we have been for the last 10, 15 years in earnest. We always have, but really put an extra effort on it the last decade or so. So we're moving through a whole lot of high priority projects. There's one coming up on Wrightsville in the next year or so, but all those priorities are looked at on a regular basis, so we appreciate you bringing all that great information in for us. Any other response to public comment? All right. You did a good job, Larry.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda here is introductions and presentations. We've got a presentation on our community rating system. Already at the mic. Very nice. Thank you.
I'm going to do a quick update on our community rating system, give you a little background. The town first FEMA flood maps were issued and adopted in 1973. As you know, if your property is located in special flood hazard area and you have a mortgage, you're required to have national flood insurance. To our citizens, to help our citizens with this financial burden, the town of Keddelville Hills joined the community rating system in 1990. Community rating system is a national program developed by FEMA. CRS communities can be rewarded for doing more than simply regulating construction of new building to the minimum national standards. CRS criteria is based on the community's effort to reduce flood risk to buildings, manage development, protect new buildings beyond the minimum NFFIP protection level, preserve or restore natural function of the flood plain, and to help ensure agents obtain flood data and help obtain flood insurance. CRS recognizes and encourages communities and state activities that go beyond the minimum requirements. CRS rewards communities for the use of flood insurance premium discounts. Keddelville Hills has been in Class Six for the past 10 years. This year, we had our three-year cycle visit and are very pleased to announce that because of the work the town has done to protect properties and reduce risk of flooding, we are now a Class Five community. This means that all of our citizens will receive a 25% discount on their flood insurance premium for national flood insurance policies, new and renewed as of October 1st, 2021. This is the tangible result of the flood mitigation activities the town of Keddelville Hills implemented to protect the lives and reduce property damage.
That is super exciting news.
Awesome. And if you have a preferred rate policy, that percentage is still, you still get a 10% discount on having a preferred rate policy outside of the flood hazard area. So it extends to those who we encourage strongly to maintain their flood insurance.
Even if they're not in that zone, that's right.
And we've gone to great lengths to try to make it affordable for them. So, thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that's fantastic news. Some of you might have heard, we're going to squeeze in a little video here right now as part of our introductions and presentations. We have a fantastic rescue program. I'll let you, go ahead, play.
My name's David Elder. I've been with Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue since the beginning. We are very, very happy for the support the town gives us every year. We've got a great staff. I've never had as many applicants as we have this season. That is no small part due to the support that the town gives this division. The people on the beach appreciate these young people every day. And for about the last 10 years, we've been at 1% of the people we pulled out of the ocean every year had to have emergency medical assistance. Last year, it was one, one single person. That is something that I'm very proud of and the staff here is very proud of as well.
My name is Benjamin Battle. This is my 16th season with David and Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue. My seventh as the Assistant Ocean Rescue Supervisor. I'm originally from Keddelville Hills, North Carolina. I'm very pleased to introduce the 51 lifeguards we have on staff for the summer of 2021. This year, throughout May and leading up to Memorial Day, we logged over 3,000 hours of training. It was a lot of good training, a lot of really good guards who are motivated and passionate about life safety and protecting the beach guards of the town.
Hi, my name's Jake Landau. I'm the supervisor here at KDH. I'm happy to be serving my fourth season here. I'm from Bealex, Virginia, and I go to George Mason University.
My name's Joseph Davidson. This is my fourth year working for Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue. My first year as a supervisor. I go to University of Tampa, and I major in allied health with a focus in physician assistant medicine.
Hi, my name is Brandon Beublass. This is my seventh summer here. I've been a supervisor for four years, and I just graduated from UC Greensboro.
I'm Reggie Kelly. I'm from Camden County. I go to St. State University. I'm majoring in mathematics, food science, and this is my third year at KEDH.
Hi, my name's Ariel Becker. I'm 20 years old. This is my first year working for KDH Ocean Rescue. I go to Christopher Newport University, and I'm majoring in environmental science and clinical psychology.
Hi, I'm Michelle. I'm from the Eastern Shore of Virginia. This is my first year guarding for KDH, and I love honey Crispapples.
My name's Michael Stewart. I live in Southern Shores. This is my rookie year here, and I am a rising senior at First Flight High School.
Hello, I am Brody Nash. I am from Collington. This is my rookie year here, and I go to First Flight High School, and I'm on swim team.
My name's Jude. I'm from Keddelville Hills, North Carolina. I've been working at Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue for two years, and I plan on going to NC State to major in computer science.
Way on the shit!
Hello, my name is Savannah Wallace. I'm 21 years old, and it's my second year working for KDH. I currently go to Appalachian State University, where I'm majoring in history education.
Hi, my name's Simon Greenwood. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia. This is my first year working for KDH OR. I go to the University of Virginia, and I'm studying speech pathology.
Hi, I'm Cass Williams. I'm from Staten Island, New York. This is my first year guarding at KDH. I go to Columbia University, study economics, and I run track.
Hi, my name is Emily Rooney. I am from Birmingham, Michigan. This is my first summer with Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue, and I'm studying computer science at Columbia University.
Hi, my name's Emery. I'm 19 years old. This is my fourth year as a Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue lifeguard, and I go to college at COA for medical working major.
Hi, I'm Nolan McGuire. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I go to Point Park University in downtown Pittsburgh, and this is my third year working for KDH.
My name's Connor Hay. I'm a supervisor here at KDH OR. I've been going, I've been working here for about six years. I go to James Madison University. I'm a senior there, and I'm about to graduate with my bachelor's in computer information systems.
My name's Aiden May. This is my fourth year with Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue. This is my first year as a supervisor. Going to NC State University, and I'm majoring in meteorology.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Chris Moore with KDH Ocean Rescue. This is my fourth year as a lifeguard, second year as a supervisor, and I'm originally from Maryland.
My name is Louie. I'm from Charlesville, Virginia. This is my first year working for Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue. I go to school at Virginia Tech studying physics. Go Huggs!
My name is Jason Losman. I'm from British, Virginia. This is my first year at Ocean Rescue, and I'm going to the Dare County Fire Academy.
My name is Warner Campbell. I'm from Nashville, Tennessee. I'm going into my senior year at First Flight High School, and this is my second year working.
Hi, my name's Tyler. I live in Keddelville Hills, North Carolina. This is my second year at Ocean Rescue, and next year I'll be going to ECU.
Hi, my name's Logan Deason. I'm from Kodiak, Alaska. I am a rising junior at First Flight High School, and this is my first year at Ocean Rescue.
My name is Ben Koppelman. I live in Nagsay, North Carolina. This is my first year here at Ocean Rescue, and I go to UTW in Wilmington, and I study geospatial science.
Hello, my name's Ty Anderson. I'm seven years old. This is my first year working at Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue, and I go to First Flight High School. I'll be a senior next year.
Hi, my name is Chloe Weiner. I'm 16. I'm a rookie this year, and I go to First Flight High School.
Hi, my name's Carly Bauer. I'm 21. This is my first year doing Ocean Rescue. I am from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I go to Appalachian State University, studying environmental science.
Hey, my name's Stan Dotson. I grew up in Keddelville Hills, North Carolina, and this is my fourth year working for Keddelville Hills Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Gaffey Gilbert. I'm 21 years old. I've been working with KDH OR for two years now. I'm from the other things, and I just graduated from East Carolina University with a bachelor's in anthropology.
My name is Isabel Campbell. I've been guarding for KDH for two years. I'm from Franklin, Tennessee, and I go to ECU, and I'm majoring in food marketing and journalism.
Hey, y'all, my name's Olin Downing. I grew up here in KDH. I'm going to COA for my associate's degree in arts, and this is my rookie year at KDH OR, and it's the best job I've ever had.
How old were you when you first came to work here?
I started working for Keddelville Hills when I was 17 years old.
This is a big part of what we've been able to accomplish here. We have a huge number of local applicants, and it makes all the difference in the world on the product which we deliver, which is prevention and safety. These kids know more about this area than anybody else because they're from this area. They love the sports here. They know what they want to do as well. Huge number of the kids that come from out of town get infected by our local kids, and they're doing all the same fun stuff that our local kids do. They're surfing, they're fishing, they're out in the sound after work. It is a great group of young people, and it's all made possible by wages and great work environment, and that has a lot to do with the town.
Very good. Makes you proud. Great work out there. And a nice production on that video, too. Yeah, it was very good. Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to mention, too, real quick, something that wasn't in the video, and I'm not sure, I'd like for everyone to know that Ocean Rescue does it, but they have a junior lifeguard program. And this, I think, I might be wrong on this, but I think this might be the first time that some of the guards that I've seen and hear were actually participated in the guard program, in the junior lifeguard program. I think it was started, all those kids are now 17 and 18, because I know my oldest daughter did it, and so it's just super cool to see that program coming to fruition and those kids feeding into the program. And my youngest daughter participated this summer and absolutely loved it. And so it's, to me, that is like, that program is single-handedly like the best summer camp. I've heard so many kids talk about how awesome it was, and they sleep good when they get up.
And to go along with that, it was really good to see a lot of them were First Flight students.
Yeah.
That was very nice.
Yep.
It's great. Were you grad? Yeah. Physics and astro. Some smart kids in there. Future science guys, girls. Good stuff. That was really nice to be able to get to know them that quick, run through all those kids. Go for it. I'm biased. I brought them all chocolate chip cookies the other day.
Aww.
June's last day. He's heading off to NC State on Friday.
Yep. We've listed quite a few of them this week.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it'll be a little thinner.
It's really nice having the local ones there.
Yeah, all the high school students still around. That's right.
Right.
Is there any old business? No? All right, then we're moving into new business, the first item of which is site plan review for 2,500 square foot drive-through restaurant at 1208 South Croatan Highway, 25 parking spaces, some site modifications, et cetera, et cetera. Get a little presentation, yeah?
I can elaborate a bit on that.
A little bit?
Yeah. So in closing, the packet is plans for a new 2,500 square foot drive-through restaurant, 25 parking spaces, drive-through aisle, and associated site improvements. The proposed restaurant is a permitted use within the commercial zoning district of restaurant. The plan calls for demolition of the existing shopping center attached. You will find your commercial site plan review application, site development plans, architectural plans, lighting plan, site narrative, stormwater calculation, willingness to serve from KDH WWTB, DOT permit package, the applicant's response to town staff technical review two comments, and most recent staff comments. The planning board reviewed this proposal on July, it's not January, July 20th, and forwarded the board of commissioners recommending approval with several conditions and recommendations. The recommendation being recommend applicant connect site to Blue Jay Street to allow traffic to enter the property from another street other than US 158. Additionally, allows access to Martin Street, US 158 intersection, including a traffic light via a public right-of-way and not only through an adjacent commercial property. Since that time, the following condition remains. This was a landscaping breakdown for compliance. Since that time, this has been brought into compliance. It's not reflected on your plans, but the applicant did provide this week showing that. So that condition is no longer there. It's been taken care of. Staff recommends approval of the site plan, and with no longer that condition, so as presented.
All right, super. Yeah, thorough plan, lots of detail in there. Always love looking at those things.
Yeah. And Mr. Strater and Fabricant are in the audience. If they have any questions particular on the site plan, and I can try and answer any man as well.
All right. Looked pretty thorough to me. It's state-of-the-art, and what's there now is decidedly not. It is nice that it's able to keep those easements and connect to the adjacent commercial properties, which will help as well. I get the suggestion about Blue Jay would be nice, and understandably not required, but certainly a great suggestion. You never know what might be possible down the line. Any comments or questions for anybody from the board? I'd just like to say that the neighbors of this new property are very excited. Yes. Small town. Walk over and get a cup of coffee right next to her anytime we want. That's right. Cheerfully received. There you go. Very nice. All right. If there aren't any other comments or questions, then we are looking for a motion. Neighbor feeling no pressure.
I know.
May I make a motion of approval that we improve the site plan for the 2,500 square foot drive-through restaurant at 1208 South Croatan Highway in the commercial zone with 25 parking spaces and associated site modifications.
Afternoon. Excellent. We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second from the singer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, guys. Looking forward to breaking ground sometime soon. All right, so the next item in new business is number two, street improvement request for Indian Drive Right-of-Way in the Hendricks Addition subdivision. We have the details in the packet, but I'll put a few things up on the screen as well. Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Mike Robinson, engineers admitted a conceptual right-of-way plan on behalf of Philip Harrington Enterprise to improve this right-of-way from the intersection of Seminole to Aztec. Assistant Planning Director Cameron Rayes attached memorandum highlights request for the additional roadway and associated drainage improvements. The street improvement study committee reviewed it at July 27th meeting, and the three conditions that are listed in the memo. Staff recommends approval of conceptual right-of-way plan for Indian from Seminole to Aztec, subject to the conditions listed above, and a motion would be in order.
Got all the details there? Any questions about it? Good, Louie. All right. We are looking for that motion.
May I make a motion of approval for street improvement request, Indian Drive Right-of-Way, Hendricks Addition subdivision, as presented.
Excellent. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Anybody in Lime Green Shrimp? I just didn't watch the field. Second! I'm going to hold me out there. I'm just giving it our time. No, it's good. All good, all good, but I know we're all in for this. This is a great little project.
It is.
And nice to have a little turnaround for the fire equipment and all that sort of thing. So we have motion and a second on the floor. Are there any further discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is in new business is appointments. We have an open spot on the planning board, and I know you guys have been reviewing this and this types of discussions, so how are we feeling?
Well, reviewing the packet, I see we have one reappointment and then another empty seat we're going to fill. I'm very supportive of reappointing Ron Simon. Ron, he's brought us, you know, I feel he's done a great job in that role of planning board. I really, he seems like a fair, knowledgeable member of that board, and I'm very supportive of reviewing the term.
All right, super. Consider that motion, is that right?
We group everybody.
If everybody together, you want to.
Yeah, and I also like to nominate Natalie Painter for the open seat on the board right now. I served with Natalie two years on the Community Affairs Commission. Natalie did a really fine job. She was our vice chair during that time. She really gave, added a lot to our meetings, a lot of creative ideas, and brought a lot of positive energy to that group. You know, we were sad that she left. Really, she expressed interest in the planning board, and I think she'd be high addition.
Excellent.
So nominate to reappoint Ron and appoint Natalie Painter.
Excellent. So we have the nominations on the floor. We've got a second from the singer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Congratulations to the reappointment and to the fourth. Next item is committee reports. I heard you might be here, but I don't see her.
Well, I can.
You've got some stuff to tell us?
Hey. Now, I will start off with saying, see, Kelly does such a wonderful job with our Community Affairs Commission. Committee reports are hard. She's hard to beat, yeah. But tomorrow is our next-to-last First Flight Market, if I understand, and the CAC will have a table at that event. Staff did a super job creating a nice little pamphlet for us to give other folks, kind of educating people to what the CAC does. So what I really am excited about on the inside, there's a cool little survey. We just get to ask folks, what would you like to prove in the town? What concerns about appearances do you have? So it'll give us a chance to have a nice little survey, and a lot of people, you know, the way they kind of peruse at the market, we probably get some pretty insightful data to look over, study, and maybe bring some things to the board down the road, some ideas that people may have. So fun stuff.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, are there any other committee reports? Over here, yes.
I was asked by Commissioner McAvoy to give a committee report for the street improvement subcommittee. I'll do that really quick, but that's okay.
Yep.
The SISPC met on July 27th. There are three items on the agenda. The first was a request from Philip Harrington to pave the portion of Indian Drive that the board of commissioners already voted on this evening. The second request, I got to take that. Was brought to the, forwarded by Commissioner Winley to repaint the stop bar at the intersection of Bay Drive and Walker. This item was sent to the SISPC for review because of the response from the town engineer regarding the MUTCD. After lengthy discussion of the MUTCD and the use of stop signs, the SISPC recommended the board of commissioners continue to follow the MUTCD for the use of all traffic control devices in Keddelville Hills. Following this MUTCD, the stop bar would not be repainted at the intersection, is their recommendation. The third item was drainage concern from citizens, specifically from property owners in Virginia Dare Shores Avalon Beach subdivision, following a series of in Virginia Dare Shores Avalon Beach subdivision, following a series of heavy rain events between June second and June twelfth. The SISPC heard from many of those citizens at the meeting. We also heard from the town engineer and Public Services Department. The SISPC directed staff to evaluate the areas and develop cost estimates to relieve some of the issues if possible. The town engineer will bring his analysis and cost estimates back to the SISPC for consideration when the next capital projects are recommended through the board. That is the end of the committee report for the SISPC.
Thanks, Rita.
Can I just, Ben, just real quick with the, um, Board of Tourism? Um, you may have seen recently that, um, the Board of Tourism approved, um, further exploration of the event center and, and then, um, this past Monday, the Dare County Board of Commissioners also approved, um, further exploration of that, and it really just means that they can move forward with exploring the idea more and, and getting some things set with that side, so it's not, um, far from a done deal.
Not yet, but that's more.
But yeah, that's more to do, and I don't know, if anyone has taken, taken a look at the plans, it is a really cool concept, um, for a plan that's kind of open, um, it can be, you're gonna be able to see through it, so you're gonna be able to open up both sides, which is cool.
Beautiful view.
Um, and, and allow for some sports, they will have, there will be an outdoor for courts and hopefully some height for some courts for, you know, pickleball tournaments and things like that, so it's, um, really a multi-use space. Um, there's a long way to go, and I still have a lot of concerns, um, you know.
There'll be many more to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, but, so that's, that was the reason, thank you.
That's it for committee reports, commissioners, there's commissioner, oh, sorry, commissioner agenda, anybody?
I have one thing. Um, I had asked of the, uh, police chief, uh, an update on, um, traffic accidents, uh, at Lake. You know, we've talked about that before, and we've had some issues with that before. Uh, the status was that, uh, DOT indicated there was need for a stoplight there, but they didn't have the money to put it there. Uh, and the chief had shared with me that since my inquiry in twenty eighteen, where it was reported there were thirteen minor collisions going back two years, uh, at Lake Drive, since then, we've had twenty-eight collisions reported. Um, two of those, uh, were with injury, four possible injury, and twenty-two with no injury. Um, there's, there's, there's still a definite problem there, uh, and perhaps we could send another letter, uh, to DOT asking them to check on the funding levels to see if there could be any, uh, improvement. This is sparked by, I was involved in an accident there.
Oh, wow, okay.
Going to Harris Teeter, and all of a sudden, just out of nowhere, this car comes flying off of hitting another car, rear-ending another car, and bounced over into me. And, uh, it, just, I think, I think we need to send another letter asking DOT to, you know, at least look at the funding levels to see if they've improved, if they can make, uh, you know, any adjustments there, so.
Sounds like a reasonable, uh, suggestion, anybody consensus on that?
Yep.
So Mayor, I guess you're the guy to send the letter.
Yeah, certainly have my name on it. We'll, we'll work something out.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I, uh, nothing. I don't think. Um, town manager's agenda?
Yes, sir, um, just real quickly, um, back to the brochure that Commissioner Winley referenced, um, I'd like to point out specifically, the staff member that did this is our very own Jill Odell, who is our videographer this evening. Jill's been working on, with, um, planning department and administration, um, in an intern position with COVID and school being closed, um, and she's just been a godsend. She's so talented, and we've enjoyed so much having her, um, help us out. She did a lot of work for planning, and we've had her, um, we've had her a little bit, and I've really enjoyed working with her, and as you can see from this, very talented, and, um, she's gonna be leaving us, today's her last day, she'll be going back to UNC Chapel Hill, um, but we've certainly invited her back during any breaks that she has in time that we can pick that brain, um, but if we could just give her a nice round of applause. And she is not related to Michael Odell at all.
Okay. Never seen him before.
But you are playing the two-ish.
Just wanted to say, uh, thank you very much. Thanks for all you do, we really appreciate it. Safe travels back.
Yes.
Uh, town managers' agenda, I mean, sorry, town attorney's agenda?
Um, yes, Ed, I would, uh, board if you didn't don't for just a little bit. Um, I think there's a motion, uh, sitting in front of you guys, uh, I'd like for us to go into closed session just to discuss various legal issues, uh, no pending lawsuits or anything of that nature, just various legal matters.
All right, uh, so moved, or should we make a motion?
Um, if you would just read the motion.
This makes me the one that's up there.
Quoting statute.
All right, uh, I'll move that the Board of Commissioners enter into closed session pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three in order to preserve attorney-client privilege concerning various legal matters.
Check.
We got a, a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, I'm sorry, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will go into closed session, I believe, upstairs, and we will, for those in the audience, we will return at some point and continue the meeting.
Yeah, thanks.
The chairman.
Yes.
Um, I neglected to give you this, just for the record.
Yes.
I was bound.
Today's the.
Pretty much the same as one.
Yeah, great.
Although it has changed.
I appreciate it, we'll make sure that the, the.
It's between sixty dollars.
Thank you.
Eight, all those guys. You know, when you got the post, the four-by-four at whatever, eighteen bucks, and the sign blade at twenty-five, and then the truck, the staff time.
Hundred dollars.
Overhead, a hundred dollar bill.
They catch that guy.
He knew he caught the guy stealing funds, so.
Been nice to talk him up.
I'm afraid this time, year over year.
Thank you, I'll probably need it.
They take a little.
I am. A bit more of a regular college experience than what I've been used to, I guess. Thank you.
But he is the town engineer. His company, American Engineering, has an, uh, annual contract that he serves as a town engineer, um, and that's been going on since probably two thousand and six.
Ah, okay, that makes, that makes sense. I was curious, uh, my, Pete and my uncle and aunt, we're still, uh, we're friends, and, uh.
Yeah, well, deep creek forty years or whatever, he lived up in the neck of the woods. Yeah, yeah.
Indeed, well, I guess.
He's up behind the go-kart track, Paradise Golf, uh, Dunkin' Donuts.
That's right.
They sold their property, I think one of his nieces or, or some family member, and then, uh, they moved, um, to a house up there to retire.
Yeah.
You mean Dunkin' Donuts. In KDH, yeah.
He's always held there.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's weird.
Obviously, I. Yeah, and so he's gonna, he's going out of here.
You suck my ass back. You have four again.
You put.
Incredible pressure on my.
They go to.
It's done.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it can take.
I did too.
A half an hour, two hours, you don't know, and then they'll come back, there's not a whole lot left.
You did good though.
Yeah, I don't know what's gonna take off, but.
Yeah, and just the consent agenda, and then there's another chance for public comment, but, um, and Meredith's committee report wasn't specific, from what I heard, is Pete needs to plan to be back to the SISPC in October of November.
Yes.
Because he needs that much time to then get to the Board of Commissioners to authorize.
I didn't even actually see my granny youngins.
Design and survey.
Didn't like that drive, but other than, it's supposed to be.
To then have.
Twelve hours until it's sixteen.
All our reviews and everything.
Traffic up for in New York, twenty mile an hour, most going for miles every hour.
We can go down to twenty miles an hour in traffic. Cause there's water line.
Coming back the same way, and they drive like.
Design.
Speed of fifty-five.
So that's the annual progress.
Yeah, we're working up today.
This year's.
Next time when I come back, I'll drive it all the way back, once you get to Chesapeake Bay.
And then.
That way we go.
We started this year's.
Simple driving.
Which is.
Basically turn, go, start with doors. Go to New York, get a bike, toward Washington Bridge and everything.
Will award.
I'm still waiting for some of the tolls to come back in where you get to drive through.
And design service.
I had a rental car, so I guess it'll take a while to get to me.
Design, and then confirm scope.
And so.
I don't know what to do, man.
And then, it just is drive through, you know, and I look at tolls, eighty-six, park caution by law, everything else, and they got you, they rip off on that one, and Chesapeake Bay Bridge, head home, I mean, fourteen dollars. Fourteen dollars. The turnpike, the Jersey's turnpike was eighteen dollars.
Could be October, SISPC, November.
Way they come home at Chesapeake Bay Bridge tunnel, they work on that tunnel, like, hey, you race so soon, we have just two lanes both ways. I can remember, we stopped twice up there, eating at a little restaurant that used to be there.
First option?
Mm-hmm, and it's gone, that's first time I had kids when they were little, you know, four or five years old, had them up there, we were just, that's the scene there, and we were all looking down, everything stayed out there, and look, there goes something coming up. Yeah, and went through the bridge, and they went back down on the other side.
With regard to.
I guess, uh. That's what I did, two days driving up, or I was staying two days with kids, then two days driving back, then the day to rescue.
Yeah, what we emailed, that, that group that was in here, was really email, we had one person that we didn't give us a phone number, or email address, we had to do a take the letter, but everybody else is pretty good with.
The name I said.
So my intent was, everybody that we've got, that's on the list, we know that, um, sometimes it's a direct email, it's a, a week, so it's, you know, the best we've got. It's usually, those usually ten days to forty days out to get everybody scheduled to say, cause it's not like the third.
And every time, every time you start picking, it's been thirty-five, it's just fifteen minutes to break in. It's their life, so we just, I gotta get it, so.
Type thing, but that was our intent, was just to email.
Taking Mel's fleet.
Appreciate that, so.
Near the end of the year.
For the crew?
Well, no, I guess he didn't, I, my cruise I'm gonna do in October of next year, however I get out of mine, that big is to St. John's and all those. Yeah, so, and my kids trot me off there, and they come pick us up. We went out of Baltimore when my own crews, it was big, and he's kind of out of backseat, going back home, cause you ready to go home, then you, and we're back.
Yeah, the drop wheel.
Yeah, they drop it in, I think it's.
Rula, but that's their manager.
But he go, then you get back from Baltimore all the way back, so, but that's only four hour ride. Yeah, Carnival's all we use, you know, cause we, I'm taking my grandkids with me.
Sorry.
And I'm taking.
Town engineer, the town engineer's.
Three of them, and one's, one's, just gonna be her sixteenth birthday present, so she turned sixteen, and then her brother, and then Danielle, which lives with me, so, uh, what Danny does too.
Yeah, he, he's got a general services track for reviewing like the site places, he's paid for the subdivision, um, SISPC, the street ratings, the project, and then, to me, you'll just get, um.
Least specification.
Project-specific approvals.
If you get there, you get on, you know, I moved, yeah, but you pay for it, it's families a hundred, a hundred and ten dollars a night per person, so.
Whether it's water being replaced.
Me and Cindy, that's two hundred and forty dollars a night, the street project, but motel costs you that much. See, now you get all this food, free shows, entertainment, food, and, 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 of course, you buy the drink bar, so, and she gets, she gets her money worth out of that. We first start getting the drink bars, but I get the, um, uh, I get the alcohol, and, well, you just get those different, at first, oh, oh, you can drink, all day long, all night, and then, then it's, you know, fourteen drinks a day.
Really?
Yeah, it gets, so, people buy it, and that's all they were doing, to sit and greet it.
I don't want to get any drinks anyway.
Uh, and I just think, again, so there you go.
What, what is he?
But she gets rum and gin most of the time, and then, peenipilatas.
He got a foster.
And daiquiris. Right, well, if I do, what is a daiquiri? So there you go. And then Pepsi, Pepsi's cost you just as much as a drink, and it's, it's on your card.
So, Pepsi's on food, on food? They have food for those, huh? What was like water and coffee and that's about it?
Right. Our institution.
Just start to share Pete.
Get all that, you know, it's, we got a float to.
Yeah, and it's, I mean.
But I think, I tell you, we like, the bad thing is, that's how we used to take in October.
Yeah, and, and, and just the, the thing that just does.
I got called back there one time.
When we get a big flush or whatever, I think of it pushing through, but this really does, that's your control for your water table, I guess.
End of the, stay in there two days, cause it gives you the worst. If you're gonna find the water table drawdown. Driving a bit too short.
And that, right, and so, if, if we get a stop, if it's down in here.
Exact line all through there.
Keeping that water table down, that's really, and that's what Pete's, yeah, that's meaning, that's the real.
It's a twenty.
Marty rock. Yeah, you made me a fifty, you know, pulling out of the. But it's the depth of that side, which is pulling that water down water.
So today, it could, it did rain.
And that's what, that's what we.
Take you to a half dozen of, of town.
And that's a nine-day cruise.
Height is just, bringing that water table down.
Increasing the bank account, that, that, that thirty percent.
Void space for the next rank.
Exactly.
Cause the same will take. If you don't have to pay that twenty-dollar fee, that's two hundred dollars.
Whereas with this, you're not getting, you're not getting.
The only thing is, October twenty-two, it's the nine-day one, October twenty-three, the same now goes to Canada. Don't tell you that much, went out to New York and Canada one time. It's, it's just a cold crew member getting sick, and they, they just come from Florida, they sent the ship up there doing that cruise, they were freezing, over, so.
Some of the pipes.
So in, uh, in Allo State, it's warm, now, Bermuda, I like Bermuda, it's pretty good cruise there, and we might take.
Some of the pipes have a.
Out of north, and you're there, and you're sits there for four days, so you can do all you want, they own ship, our booth, we flash on it, have some exploring, and, but you learn a little thing, like the swimming museum you go into, and, and talking about the original people that came here.
Closer to.
The plantation crews had.
And.
They were made to eat out of wooden bow, wooden fork, they showed that, and they showed the leaf, and.
Behind this.
Peter, despite a bit of. They're talking about how many of them died in red.
If that were.
Stuff made with him.
Think about that.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
We went to the beach up there, up the peaks.
Anyway.
Beaches, pink, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's, uh, think of it used to be, yes, so many people go in there, and take a lot, take a lot of things, saying, well, wait, we're talking all that.
He was engineering services for most of their career, and then he sold to a Charlotte-based company.
But it, even.
Called American Engineering.
We went to Valhalla when we got married.
Well, I suppose, American, they absorbed, and then his partner, Jerry, retired pretty much immediately, and then Pete stayed on active for five years, and then been out of summer.
Well, that's when we get, we did, we'd never been here, and then we went to that, although we went to the, still plenty busy.
I was.
And, and of course, America had bought, that, um, that, that's nice.
Another big.
Roost in Raleigh.
Carnival goes to.
Think there's a fourth location.
At Moon Cave, which is just out.
Right, you get off on the.
Virginia or Chesapeake.
Shuttle boat, you go up there, and get early.
Charlotte Sky.
I think eighteen or so.
I think, and then that, there's eight.
But sit there to have all the food, everything on the island, everything's free there. But sit there to have all the food, they bring you on the island, everything's free there, yeah, so, and that, so you sit there, you go back in the water, then you want to scare rakes, all the young ladies are, they have to be around. Get you a Boston, Rice Krispie cereal, take that.
I, it's funny, I said that, you know, that Virginia Beach is.
You do that, and then people start, you go to a prom, my grandkids, uh.
They were telling me that North Carolina law is, they can't offer survey, and that was just survey as part of the ownership structure. And Virginia, you know, Virginia's got a number of license surveyors.
That work out of her.
But North Carolina, I guess they, they.
Roll the dice.
So now, yeah, that's where, that's where you get your, whole tour's about, because you get up there.
Engineers that don't. A lot of times, engineers.
We start buying insurance.
In North Carolina, they'll be.
Last three.
They'll have a list of surveyors.
Because you get down there, and then they get some, you, you lose them.
That's what they said, it's not interesting, I had to.
They, they'll, they'll give you the name first, so.
North Carolina has ownership requirement, to offer survey.
On the ship. And they got the, the re-rights, where you just stay, see the whole town, you know, go to your destination, you don't get anything back. But it, uh, now that you're getting sick on cruise ship to buy it at insurance, it costs you a fortune. But it, it weren't, it weren't that much, it's all personal, and it's worth having, you can get the, um, infirmary.
Virginia, is that she, how she do her?
I cost you arm and leg unless you have the insurance.
Pretty much. It was funny, I, I listened to some words.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that one, that kind of, that way, people get sick, they had bags hanging all up there everywhere, with them coming.
Smithfield.
Going out, he's, and, and slushing bags.
He's like, man, I took this out of the fridge, man, I get all this at my house, and he's like, it's your house, they don't, you give them a permit, you don't need nothing, I mean, that was his.
Yeah, well, before, but in all fairness, in all fairness, uh, I'm building a shed.
Cause of metal?
Cause of metal, all down here, yeah, we, we liked it.
And I, I called them.
One of the important hot doors.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're like, when you got to the ship on the dock.
Here's the setbacks, and so.
And when you actually had military, then machinists, oh, you walk right between them, to go to, it's just take not to go outside the gates, and then you come, and come back.
Yeah, it's kind of crazy.
Yes.
And he said.
And I always think, I didn't, I always thought Bermuda, Bahamas, oh, I thought they were all sandy beaches, but they're not. You know, rock and coral and everything else, you got to pay a taxi driver to take you, except for, uh, but, yeah, and Grand Turks. You got to go somewhere, I'm thinking on this side of the island, to get to a sandy beach. Of something that's probably, because I'm used to always seeing sand at the beach.
People, people. Now, it's funny, a guy down to a junior build that's more out in the country.
I'm gonna walk on that stuff.
We go on one cruise. In North Carolina, there's a very big loophole, if it's for.
Five dollars was.
This is kid farmer that says he wants to build a shed for his daughter.
Moment I got on the ship.
He did some kind of crazy execution, he can build a giant, you know, lean to, or whatever he wants.
One boat, hammer, it's from chill, we don't get it, and it, never had it before.
I don't know that, I mean, that was a country guy telling me that.
I stayed in the floor the whole time.
But, but that sounds more like the Virginia.
The time I got off.
We don't have any farming here, so.
I didn't want to get.
But my dude, I was, I moved out to Washington County, whatever, you know, the, the, she did review.
That's, that's, that's what we learned, that's insurance. Uh, but, uh, I got back, uh, got back.
See, thanks for what for you.
Yeah.
And I will shoot you an email, you and everybody, uh, that we got emails for.
Then, when we know that October. They first looked at it.
I'm gonna make a note to show you, copy that.
Wow, because he's just signing to break them up.
Yeah.
Not past.
Thanks, all right, yep, I mean that.
So as soon as you got on.
Soon as I got on.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Take care, I'll see you, sir.
Man, that's terrible. How many days was that?
That was five days.
You were paying five days.
Well, when we got to.
I was gonna make an inappropriate.
Freeport. This one was about to South Carolina, we got the Freeport, it used to be, you get off, and then farmers, these are all those stores right down there. They had, ask for the food, you know, you just buy right off the shelf, I sent you one down there and got me some of that.
Oh.
I could sleep then, that was my idea, it's like, hey, but, and it's just one of those things for life, you know, it's like.
Is it people can talk? Swing it up, bird.
And plus, I think more than anything, it's not know what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that didn't, the more.
You ever had one before?
No, that's the first one I ever had, another one I've ever had.
Seth's got practice, uh, try, suck, try to six eight.
They work at Farid, so, you know, hospital, soon got back.
Except that first flight, you didn't clock.
Give me all this stuff, and then they send me, probably with all these decorations, and when I do the magtrades, they come back, a bunch of other stuff, they told me they need to look at, and I said, that's, she said, this, that's.
I kind of want to find out what they said, that's why, I mean, they're not gonna tell us now, but I'll find out.
She said, there's a spot on your liver, and then your gallbladder needs to be looked at, so the case.
I'm surprised that one of us didn't.
They got my kidney stone, and while I was at the, set up an appointment to go get my gallbladder looked at, and I said, I'm a, being a trooper, then, you know. I don't like to wait, so it took, uh, it's September, I did a girl that worked at it, she shut me in in January, I went in there, and. The doctor just heard, did surgery, sitting there, uh.
I'm still.
You give them the. I said, sorry, when we had just a hard time, next to the last, I said, here's gonna be, you want me to, okay. And they woke me up, surgery.
But I think they're not the wisest people I've ever.
I'm always told you would feel like it'd be a little sore from gallbladder, yeah, I, she said, she said, well, when we went, we touched the gallbladder, it first, we got gangrene.
Oh, gosh.
And that's spot on my liver, and then the testizer, tests itself to the liver, since that's my liver. Right there with that, with that, with the gall, operation that you were expecting a whole lot, I love.
Gosh, man.
But, but she's, I said, I'm ten, she said, well, we got you all morphine, we put you on, I says, I must really be hurting, because I'm still hurting bad. But, um, just one of those things, you know, you gotta, you gotta get the good side, the doctor said if I had to go on then, he said if I, my granddaughter or anybody hit me in the stomach, right in that area, it could have burst and I'd been hit. So, you gotta look at the good things, that, that kidney stone, having the time did, got everything else taken care of. I don't think they'll see here.
It was a good video.
Yeah.
It was.
Uh, you were missing some, some kids that I know that are doing it, weren't on it.
Yeah, I guess they didn't do it over multiple days, mine just been one day or two days. They work shifts and everything like that.
Yeah, I know, Brianna Wilson was, she was senior this year, and she was one of your lifeguards.
Uh-huh.
But.
That's the dugouters thought about the chief.
I thought it was a good video.
Yeah.
It was.
I li- I like that, and they probably like it a lot better than coming to a board meeting too, don't you think?
Probably so.
Because.
It was more COVID friendly.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I would think that they'd want to do that forever, instead of having to come after work.
Yes, that's good.
All salty and.
Yeah.
And tired, or the day off to a board meet at six o'clock, that's just dead down.
And you're out there waiting for them to have a break, so you can all march in.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the little girl that, somebody you cut or something like that, yeah.
Why you always said?
She just got a lot, yeah, she got laughing.
Do you still give out, do our commissioners and our playmore members get a code book?
Our board, our commissioners do, our planning board members get one fifty three.
Okay, you actually give them a paper copy though.
Yes, they get a paper copy.
You see that go into PDF, and you just do away with the paper?
You know.
I'm trying to figure out if I'm a dinosaur or not, because I still like my paper.
Well, and I was gonna say the same thing, is I have all of our stuff electronically, and Cameron tends to go to. Uh, American Legal, I have, I have to read, like, the paper.
I do American Legal because I can search something, or, uh, just put in a certain word, and that's what I would, what I'm looking for.
Yeah, well, I've been in the, I've been in the code book so long, so long.
I was gonna say, I like my, my tabs and my highlighter, and.
I've been in the code book so long, especially my sections in years ninety one, um. And I've written so much of it that I know where it is, and when I read before and after it, I know why I wrote it. So I can pull intent and find out if it's just not being, if we need to fix it, or, like, I know the intent of this.
And you got to.
See, I go to American Legal a lot if I wanna send an email and cite something, because it's easy to copy and tell, but I still like having that book.
But the problem with the American Eagle is. So, at this point, we haven't done a supplement in almost two and a half years, so your American Eagle legal is extremely far behind when you get into land use section. We've done forty, I think I have forty amendments.
And, and that's what's on the front page.
Forty amendments is out there.
In the land use section of, for the past, well, maybe it's thirty.
I was gonna say, I thought they updated it not too long ago.
I say forty, but that's because a lot of them stretch across a lot of different sections, so you've got a.
But most of that, and that was on the front page, before you start looking, it says, these are not included into your.
I know, but they.
And then you gotta look through all those, and they're not, they're by date, not by quarter.
That's why my paper book, and I, I have multiple books, I have one that I write in, that I, when I need to change something. So I have one that's got scribble marks on it, so that if I ever get my consultant to update my ordinance, I got stuff that needs to be fixed, and I got one that I. Use at meetings or make copies with, and then I've got my big one, my big book that's got everything in it, the whole code. I'm all about a three ring binder, that's all I got to say about it. Yeah, man, I'm not sure I'm gonna hang with no public here and only the consent agenda left.
Mm-hmm.
I thought I was supposed to quit.
I'm glad that, I was afraid that, that BJ's committee report would have to wait till the next meeting, and with Lyle speaking, I'm glad you gave the update, hopefully they understand it.
He called Michael and asked Michael for me to give the update, I had written it and emailed it to him on Friday, so, pretty easy to reach, you know, and writing. I shouldn't be as tired as I am on a Monday. But I feel fairly worn down.
Well, it's just something about knowing you got to stay late, it just makes the date longer, and you're more tired when you get to the other seventeen hours, start sick.
Yeah, it's just a, it's such a bummer that they switched the meetings to six.
Yeah.
It was great at five thirty, because basically, you know, you might go to the bathroom, get a fresh glass of water, whatever, and then you, you're, it's time to go to a meeting.
Uh, do you remember when we had come at seven?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Landy Ward was seven thirty?
Seven thirty maybe it was.
No, that's Landy Ward's seven thirty.
They were seven thirty.
Landy Ward's seven thirty, Board of Commissioners was seven.
Yep, and, and you'd be ten o'clock getting out of here.
Oh, with the, with the.
Chickens.
I, I, I say with the bad board, it was easy, easy, ten, ten thirty.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Every time.
Every time.
Was it just a lot of people wouldn't speak?
They wanted to speak.
Yeah.
They spoke a lot.
Yes.
A lot.
Yeah.
Are we getting a storm this year?
There's a tropical watch already in Puerto Rico right this minute.
It says eighty percent developed.
I got a, I got a bad feeling.
Come on now.
The pear trees, man, it's, the pear trees are, they got me wound up.
What do you mean, what's the pear trees do?
It's a, it's a old, um, Bahamas wives tale.
Yeah.
But pear trees are ever producing this year.
Yes, they are.
And the, and the wives tale in the Bahamas is when the, when the pear trees are, they only ever produce when you're gonna have a bad. Storm season.
Oh, gosh.
And see.
And pear trees are going off.
Are they really?
Yes.
But there we got one, it's loaded, it's loaded all.
It's. Yeah, I mean, they're just completely loaded, and that's, that's the wives tale, I've known it, I've heard it forever, when the pear trees overproduce.
Get ready.
You got a bad storm coming.
See, and it's, the sound is much cooler than normal, so then that makes me think, say, hey, we might, we might skip out, but it's got that smell, but.
Yeah, it stinks.
We're gonna get it, we're gonna get clopper.
I've had a feeling since May.
Well, kind of a lot.
Hope I'm wrong.
Close to us already, you know.
I hope it's, I hope it's a little, I hope it's a little one. Think we're gonna get one, I just hope it's not a, a Isabel. I don't want Isabel.
Well, Isabel wouldn't be that bad for us, because it was oceanfront, we've had nourishment.
It would be better now.
Yeah.
I don't think we would lose twelve.
Well, I mean, the, the problem with Isabel is, how many pools do we have sitting on the beach? Eight? All the hotel pools are sitting on the beach.
Yeah.
Like, in the middle of the beach, and there was no beach road from Sea Village.
To hell.
To the, into town, yeah, it was just, I swear, it looked like God came and went like this, like a beach towel, and they were just pieces of asphalt laying on top of each other, it was like. The melting clocks in that famous painting, I was like, how did that really happen? Did the ocean pick up these slabs of asphalt, this thick? And bigger than that table, and just laid them.
Yep.
And we had cars that had like, this much of the window and roof showing, did this, like a snowdrift, the sand, the dune blew over twelve, and the car was there, and. And you were like, going like this over.
Oh, and there was, there was hot water heaters and refrigerators sticking out of the, the sand, like, you're just, don't know where they came from, Brian Newman's whole house was on the beach.
I was, you see, I don't know, years, had just fallen into it, he's standing there watching fall into the ocean.
And the sea ranch, the whole ground floor of the sea ranch fell.
Yep.
It undermined, and the whole bottom of it fell out.
Wow.
Seven feet down, that's how far it eroded under there, but those sea ranches on. Concrete pilings that are twenty-two feet deep, we found the engineered plans, we're like, oh, well, rebuild the first floor then.
How about the hotel that collapsed the floor, do we have to worry about anything like that up here? The condos, excuse me.
We don't have sinkholes.
Well, they, they, this rusted, I.
I was gonna say, it was a pool, it was a seventeenth floor pool, right, that had some kind of water issue.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
The Ramada's pool is on the second floor, but it's not on the building, right?
It's on the first floor, isn't it? No, it's on the second floor, you're right, but it's not part of the building, it's in an atrium that sits in the ground. Because the bottom of the pool is at the first floor. Um, the only one that's elevated like that is the first flight retreat, but it's also independent, there's nothing above it or below it. We got a house in Nagseth that's got a pool on top, you know, the one with the lizard, the flat top, that's got the lizard crawling up the sides of it, it's got a pool on the top. Different strokes for different folks.
Yeah, well, luckily, we don't have any seventeen story or thirty-five story.
Condo or anything.
But as far as structurally, I don't know that. I don't know of any of our big, bigger buildings that are built using, solely using steel.
Concrete, right, Sea Ranch and Ramada are concrete at their core.
Concrete at the core and around them. So, I mean, I'm sure they, they've got, of course they have steel, but that's not their, that's not their foundation.
I can't believe how rapid the oceanfront can, you know, seems like five or eight years ago, the big house. Backlash, and they're like, oh, there's no market for it, just let the market take its course, they, they won't make anymore, and they're just building them.
Yep.
We got two huge ones under preliminary review right now, I mean, just. Mind-blowingly huge, and they don't have to put in fire suppression. They're on seventy-five foot wide lots, so they're gonna take the hit for the, it's Randy Saunders, he's like, nope, I'm gonna do the extra setbacks, I don't need it. It's not gonna put in this fire suppression.
Thirty better, thirty?
I see, yeah.
That's, that's not.
That's thirty cars.
It's, it's, it's ridiculous that you're gonna, you're gonna. I don't know, someone gets wind of it and makes it public and publicly shames him.
We're, we're, we're so lucky.
A verbal flog.
We didn't lose people on that one.
Oh, yes.
They, they, they were alerted to it and got themselves out, or.
They were still partying.
Fire alarm went off, so, help, but there, there were people that were having fun, four o'clock and three thirty. Get out, get everybody out.
Also, have you ever quit, won't it?
Lost a lot of vehicles and everything else. Lost a lot of the influence, everything else.
Did Cameron tell you that a guy comes, they were doing, they were there, I guess, like, two days later? And they've been talking to the Marriott guy, and uh. They were standing on the site of the big house, and that guy comes walking up, he goes, man. That's my truck, have y'all seen my license plate? And Cameron goes, do you see your truck? License plate's gone, buddy, my insurance wants my license plate, and he goes, she goes, he goes, how about you snap a picture with your phone and show her your truck and she'll understand that the aluminum license plate is toast. But it was the one that was under, he said, yeah, but I, I parked underneath the, the front area because I had the cooler with the meat.
Now, if you're writing that, and you do something that they can prove that you said that you, you know, it was an accident, you're not, are you responsible for the house, or?
I don't think you should.
I think that's gonna be the up to the lawyer, to the judge and all that stuff.
I think.
And I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of them.
Yeah.
I thought everyone repeated, it don't go on.
Yeah, yeah, the line was.
So, yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what slopes look like.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I can gavel's back in, that's what it is. This is making session.
They were extreme.
Definitely.
I'll send it to you tomorrow, though.
Sorry, didn't mean to jump the gun there.
Okay.
Alright, so. That's where I went.
May I just wrap up my agenda real quick by giving a quick little spiel, uh, so, we went into a closed session just now. Uh, regarding various legal matters, and I was given direction by the board on those matters, um, and that's considered our, our close session.
So we're back in open session and, uh, encouraged to not take any action based on that meeting, so that's what the press always wants to do, taking action based on that. So, um, the next thing is the consent agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you, um, consent agenda this evening, the minutes from the July twelfth, um, board of commissioners meeting, the June twenty twenty-one month and report. Two, uh, oh, excuse me, one, one budget amendment for the purchase of the body, um, camera and car video software. Um, the life of the contract and related service packages for five years and will be paid in five annual installments, this is just reporting that, um, income. Number, item B is a budget transfer, this is to transfer existing buildings and grounds, um, budget to administration to cover expenses for a consultant. Um, to assist the staff in development of ADA self-evaluations and trans, um, transition plan for ADA compliance. As we've talked about before, the budget ordinance allows the budget officer, which is the town manager, to transfer from certain divisions, such as buildings and grounds to admin. We recently did one in last fiscal year from animal control and police, however, it also requires this to be recorded at the next of the meeting, so that's simply a report. Schedule public hearing, this is proposed zoning amendment for, um, light industrial one zone, special uses, add tattoos, um, studios. Recommend public hearing for this, set for Monday, September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M, and staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented.
So, I assume all this conversation, let's move with folks making that, um. Amendment?
Um, it was, it was approved by the planning board, um, and recommended for public hearing, yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mary, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of you, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And the opposed name, motion carries for consent agenda. Thank you. Once again, we have one more opportunity for public comment, I can't see without my glasses, but I believe there is no public. To comment, so, uh, the short public comment, uh, closing public comment, no need to respond to the absence of public comment. Uh, that leaves one last word on our agenda there.
One quick, uh, question, um, should we put together a press release for the community rating system upstate, I think.
That's a great idea.
I think.
Uh, uh, yes, sir.
Something really, we need to sell this and explain it to people, it's a really big deal and a big win for the town, and we need to let, shout it out to our actors.
Absolutely, just wanted to make the, um, announcement to the board of commissioners first, but yes, that's in the works.
Thank you. I expect to be sharing that voice article any day now. Looking forward to it. All kinds of credit for whoever worked, I haven't seen. Yeah, thank you for all the work, but it took all these years to get there, now it's many years of, and thank you, thanks again for that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That's a novel idea. Joe, I do like that idea, we'll see.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, I have a thumbs up from this end, uh, all of you, please, here by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.